Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Davenport Plan Zone Commission Meeting, Tuesday, December 20th, our last meeting of the year. I'd just like to ask everybody, make sure you have your cellphones turned off as they could interfere with our communication equipment. I also want to ask anybody that would like to speak, and everybody will be invited to speak, to limit your comments to five minutes or less. Direct all your statements to the commission. I am your Commissioner Bob Ingram. Barb Manus is my Vice Chair, and Dave Tolman is Secretary Treasurer. We will get into our meeting here, starting with our regular meeting. We do not have a public hearing tonight, so roll call, please. Commissioner Tolman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Schneider's excused. Eichelberry.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Tolman here. Ingram.
Present.
Hepner's excused. Bransgard.
Here.
Reinards.
Here.
Manus.
Here.
Garrett is excused, and Stalk.
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tolman. Report of City Council Activity, Laura.
I've got a couple of things for you. First is the case ORD 22-01, which is the adding single-family into the multifamily zoning district, has moved on to third consideration. So the final consideration will be held first cycle of January. REZ 22-07, which is the rezoning at Veterans Memorial at Eastern, has moved on to second consideration. The first consideration for the right-of-way vacation, ROW 22-05, has moved on to second consideration. Resolution for case F 2114, which is the Spear Commercial Park Second Edition from last year, has been approved. Case F 22-10 for the River Ben First Edition has been approved, and case F 22-13, which is the Brady 80 Business Center Third Edition, has been approved.
Council's been busy.
They were really busy, yeah.
Thank you, Laura. Secretaries' report.
Move report.
Present.
The Secretary's report has been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It will stay as written. Complaining, anything, Laura?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Zoning activity, Commissioner Tolman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We just have one case under new business, and it's case REZ 2208, request of Ecumenical Housing Development Group to rezone the address of 1112 Bridge Avenue from R4C, Single Family and Two-Family Central Residential District to RMF, Multifamily Residential District. Staff recommends case REZ 22-08 be forwarded to the City Council. Recommendation for approval, subject to the listed findings and listed two conditions, an ISO move.
Case REZ 22-08 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Matt?
Thank you. The subject property highlighted in yellow on the map, it's just under half an acre, located on Bridge Avenue between 11th Street and 12th Street. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to redevelop the existing building, to convert it to three units of multifamily. This is a single-story structure that was built in 1991. Its original use was a group home, then later transitioned to an adult daycare center. So this property highlighted in red on both maps, the map on the left is more of a zoomed out, shows you a greater neighborhood area extending from River Drive to Kirkwood Boulevard, predominantly a mixture of R4C, which is single and two-family central residential district, with areas of multifamily. So the, the map on the right shows the subject property highlighted in red. There's two properties on this block that are zoned for multifamily, and then there's also the block to the southeast, also zoned for multifamily. Carriage Hill Apartments is located just to the southeast there. The future land use map identifies this area as residential general, really predominantly extending from River, from River Drive all the way north to Locust. The city just has one classification for residential, so this includes areas from, all the way from single-family, two-family townhomes, and multifamily. Does not differentiate between lower densities and higher densities of housing. So the existing zoning district is R4C, which is single and two-family central residential district, and that's really intended to preserve and protect Davenport's dense, centrally located and established residential neighborhoods. The intent would be to rezone to the RMF, multifamily residential district. That's meant to accommodate higher-density housing, including single, two-family, I'm sorry, not single-family, two-family townhomes and multifamily. So city staff looked at the neighborhood character in analyzing the rezoning petition. So the subject structure was built in 1991, as I mentioned earlier. Its original purpose was a group home, later converted to an adult daycare. So the applicant would be, or is proposing to convert the existing building, which is shown as 3,650 square feet, into three units of housing. They intend to stick within the existing footprint of the building as well. These photos show some of the neighborhood character, so the image on the top left are the homes directly to the north, just on the other side of the alley. So we have a couple of two-story homes. The bottom left is the house directly across the street, which is a ranch, and then the image on the right is a ranch home that's two lots south. So the lot south of this property is vacant, and this would be that next property. There are some older homes scattered throughout this neighborhood. The image on the right is a home just south along Bridge Avenue that is a national landmark. Then the image on the left is an older home, not a national landmark, but does have some of that historic character to it. There are existing multifamily buildings in this area, so on the left is Carriage Hill Apartments, which is a two-story apartment complex that has 44 units, and then just south of that is 1011 Bridge Avenue, which has two different structures, four stories tall, each with eight units, a total of 16. So this neighborhood, it's located in an older part of the city. It's not in a historic district, though. It's just north of the Bridge Avenue Historic District, and located a couple blocks to the west of Prospect Park Historic District. In terms of public input, there was a neighborhood meeting held at the subject property on December 1st. There were two members of the public that attended that meeting. Notices were sent out to property owners within 200 feet notifying them of the December 6 Plan Zone Commission public hearing. We also published notes in the Quad City Times. Two members of the public spoke at that meeting in opposition to the request. Some of the reasons cited were the density of the multifamily zoning district, preserving neighborhood character was another one. And then staff have received several written comments in opposition to the requests from property owners outside of that 200-foot radius. So with that, staff is recommending that the rezoning petition be forwarded to City Council with the recommendation for approval, in accordance with the findings and two conditions. So our findings are that the amendment is consistent with the Davenport 2035 Future Land Use Plan, which identifies this property as residential general. The proposed zoning map amendment to multifamily is compatible with the zoning of nearby developed property. With the conditions recommended by staff, the proposed zoning map amendment will enable the existing building to be used in a manner consistent with the surrounding area, which would be residential. As condition, the rezoning request is compatible with the established neighborhood character, which consists of a variety of single, two-family, and multifamily dwellings. Six, the rezoning, rezoning the property to multifamily residential district will not create any non-conformities. So to further protect the neighborhood character of the area, staff are recommending two conditions. The first one being that the maximum building height be limited to 35 feet. That's the same maximum building height as the R4C district that is currently under. And then the second condition would be that the maximum number of dwelling units be limited to four. So as it stands, the multifamily residential district permits one dwelling unit per 1,500 square feet of lot area, so that would allow 13 units at this property. So staff is recommending limiting that to four, which is one more than the petitioner's request, just to provide that flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any questions at this point? Commissioner Manus.
Thank you. Matt, I am wondering, and this has come up in other cases as well, is there any legal concern that the city has with limiting the number of units to be less than what the zoning district allows when the zoning is changed?
I'll take that one. We've not had specifically that discussion, but generally speaking, state code, when it comes to rezonings, allow cities to put conditions on the property, which can include limiting the density of a district with the approval of the petitioner. And that's, we've done some more things in the past, and I've never had any concern voiced from the legal department specifically.
What I would be wondering about is, say the property would be sold and change hands before this development occurs, would the subsequent owner be bound by this condition that's more restrictive than the zoning district?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, you had mentioned that the protests were all out of the 200-foot protest range, is that correct? And we've got none within the 200 feet?
Correct.
Thank you. Any additional questions before I ask for the petitioner to speak? Seeing none, would the petitioner like to step forward?
Yeah, thank you very much for hearing this.
Can you please identify yourself and give an address?
Sam Moyer, I'm with the Ecumenical Housing Development Group. Our address is 1016 West 7th Street.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. The, the project that's underway is a, is part of a federal low-income housing tax credit program. We've signed into a multi-year agreement. There'll be, it's fully funded, it's fully ready to take off. There will be no changes in the, in the terms of this, of what we're, of what we're doing. In other words, the, the agreement to take on the credits is going to require us to keep the building basically as-is. We won't be adding any square footage to the current site as it stands today, nor will be increasing the number of units, and this is long-term. We're looking at like 2041 before this agreement would be over, so it's quite a long time in the future. We also want the neighborhood character to be at its best. We like this to be a safe, great place for the residents that we have as well. We have high standards for how we take care of our properties, and we believe this will be a very good investment. You think of anything, Matt? Pretty, pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions of the petitioner? Seeing none? I will open this up to those in favor or in opposition. Please feel free to step up to the podium, identify yourself and your address, and try to limit your comments to five minutes. Would anybody like to speak?
Hello, my name is Lamar Bucklew. I'm at 1206 East River Drive, so at the corner of River and Bridge. And, and so my wife was here at the last meeting, and I've sent comments in, and felt neat to show up again today, just to kind of visit with you a little bit and let you know that, you know, when you look back at, at the zoning, the rezoning that happened in the city in 2018, one of the main reasons it was, one of the reasons we have this patchwork mess of zoning, is because we did a lot of spot zoning that happened over, you know, many, many years. So we, that's why we have these apartment buildings in residential neighborhoods and multifamily dwellings and so forth. So we really believed that in 2018, when they, the city did the rezoning, that they were going to address this, and they were going to cut back on spot zoning changes. Now, as was just mentioned and explained, there's a lot of multifamily housing already in the area, and, you know, we as, as property owners in the neighborhood, and we're outside the 200-foot area, but we're just down the street from it, so we're in that general neighborhood. We, you know, we feel like that multifamily dwellings don't have the same perspective on the properties as property owners do. We've had some issues with rental properties in the neighborhood, and crime, and that type of thing. So while I understand Ecumenical Housing, you know, I'm sure it's a reputable organization, and, and I understand what they're trying to do there, I'm just saying that, that in our neighborhood, we already have lots of multifamily housing, and this spot zoning approach seems to run counter to what the city was trying to do through its whole rezoning process of 2018. So once you start granting these exceptions, you know, patchwork, and, and through the different neighborhoods, then it kind of makes you wonder, why did we do that process in 2018? So, again, thank you for listening to my comments, and I don't know if you got any questions of me, but otherwise, I'll just.
Point of clarification, you're referring to the zoning rewrite of 2019, correct?
Well, I was thinking of what was going on during 2018, and then in 2019.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Commissioners, any questions of the? Commissioner Branson?
I guess I've got a question. When the property was operating as a daycare, adult daycare, or as a group home, was there any disruption noted, noticed in the neighborhood when it was in that type of use?
Well, it's, it's a challenge to describe, you know, what disruption is, and I know that, you know, we've been, we've been in the neighborhood now 10 years, and I'm not, I'm, I'm thinking that when we first moved there, it was the gentleman's home, but then the daycare, it was off and on as to how successful they were as a daycare, but it's right across, I mean, literally across the street from those apartment buildings that we talked about. So, you know, that whole area is quote-unquote "high-density," if you want to call it that. So, you know, I wouldn't say that there was major disruptions, but at the same time, it wasn't, wasn't single-family owned, if you want to call it that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions at this time? Commissioner Eichelberry?
Hi, thanks for coming to visit with us today. So I think it's my understanding that currently this property could be turned into two different units. Would you be opposed to that, or is it just the four that's bothering you, or bothers them?
Well, it's, you know, under, I think if I understand the zoning correctly, under R4C, you can have up to two. So, I mean, that's, it's already that, so what's the need for changing it to multifamily, to three or more, you know, in that property? I mean, it's, it's, as I mentioned, 3,500 square feet, that's not a lot of square footage for three, three dwellings, but I don't know what the plan is, and maybe there's, there doesn't need to be a lot of square footage. So, I mean, we're just opposed, not necessarily to, you know, to the people, if you will, but it's to the, the concept of changing the zoning for a special request. It's not going to make a big difference to go from two to three, so why change it?
Thanks.
Any additional questions at this time? Seeing none, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
James Yates, 1008 Mississippi Avenue, so a couple blocks over, not within the 200 feet zone. I'd love to have a conversation about that someday, because the neighborhood is bigger than 200 feet, and when you talk about taking something from a single-family or two-unit type environment into a three, four, you know, even by zoning requirements up to 18, I think is what I heard. So I think that requires a little bit more conversation than just 200 feet, right? This is an offense. This is a major change to the neighborhood. There is tons of multifamily spaces available in this portion of the neighborhood, as Lamar mentioned as well. You have two major complexes there today. Some of those we deal with issues, right? With the increased density and, and some of those being lower-income folks, it does raise some of the crime in the area. I can't speak to whether this location was an eyesore or caused problems, I think someone asked the question. Never really noticed it very much, walked the dog through the neighborhood, kids ride bikes, right there in that neighborhood all the time, so really, but I think there will be a change. You're going to have three units, let's say two cars per unit, maybe. Maybe it's one car, where are you going to put the cars, right? It's going to change the way that looks today. You're going to have car parking, trash cans, you know, all that stuff now out in the neighborhood that's more above and beyond what it is today. So I, again, would just implore, why change it? It's two units now, this is an additional unit. We would just request that it would stay as-is and oppose the change for the character of the neighborhood, and to fulfill what you guys did with this planning stuff, which did go in 2019, right? So, you know, we want to stop the patchwork and really let this, let it develop, work with the East Pluff Neighborhood Association as well, on the board there as well, and we've been advocating for more single-family ownership in the area, investment in the area, so that the city will invest in the area as well. So I would just ask you to take that into consideration and maintain the zoning as, as it is today.
Thank you. Commissioner Reinards?
Thank you. Thank you. This question is more directed towards Laura, and I apologize, because I've missed the preceding meetings. Has there been a concept plan submitted as it relates to what they want to do there? That includes renderings, or plot plan, or any of that yet?
Yep, there, there was a floor plan that they submitted, and I, the petitioner can give you a little bit more detail, but we're, we're talking several bedrooms, which is a dire need in the city. It's very much something that the city does not have in terms of rental. I would, I would like to remind the board, too, that even with this rezoning, we do not regulate whether something, with, with the land use, with zoning specifically, whether something is rental or not. That is a Fair Housing Act issue, and we cannot prohibit, even if it was a single-family home, from turning into a rental. So I did want to differentiate between the, well, I understand it is definitely an issue in the neighborhood and a valid concern, it's not something that the zoning itself controls.
Okay, the other question I have for you, Laura, is there any other low-income rental housings in that area right now? If I understand correctly, they're thinking about a low-income approach to this property when you redo it?
I do not know, and when we look at zoning, we also cannot look at something, whether it's low-income or not, that's another federal Fair Housing Act issue.
Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry, Matt.
No, no problem.
Wanted to get caught up.
Commissioner Eichelberry?
Hey, you had mentioned that sometimes when you're walking around, when you walk by some of the multifamily homes and apartments in the neighborhood, that you've seen some issues. Have you identified any nuisance properties that happen to be single residential?
Oh, sure. Absolutely, yep.
All right.
So.
I see no further questions, thank you.
One more comment. Appreciate that the gentleman wants to invest in the neighborhood, so I do want to acknowledge that, just, we would, as homeowners, I would rather keep it zoned as-is, so I appreciate the consideration you would give to that.
Would anybody else like to speak? Commissioner Reinards, did you have another comment?
Yes, thank you. Is this property currently vacant now?
It, it, it is. It was originally, when, in between when it was, became the daycare, it went to Vera French, is that? Family Resources, and they were going to utilize the building. They, the person that was going to use that through Family Resources no longer planned to, so that's why Ecumenical Housing has taken this project on.
Okay, I'm sorry for all the extra questions, but I missed previous meetings, so, thank you.
Hi, I'm Adam Hope. I live at 1404 East 10th Street. My husband and I own the Theodore Eldridge House. We purchased it about six and a half years ago. It was on the market for four years. There was two other houses in the neighborhood that were on the market anywhere from two to six years. There have been a lot of changes in the neighborhood that have been for the positive. I, I oppose it for the simple fact that I feel that the area is saturated with apartments. Behind us directly are two, we have the one that we call the Cube, it's on Mississippi Avenue, I don't know the address off the top of my head. And then there's a, a building that's directly behind us that is also an apartment building. Our entire alley is littered with the dumpsters, and our yard, we have no trees on our property anymore, and our yard is constantly littered with trash from people that are going to and from the apartment buildings, throwing trash out of their vehicles. Anytime the wind picks up, there is trash being blown from the dumpsters. Obviously, we're outside the 200 feet, but I know the, the large apartment complex there between College and Bridge seems to have a lot of police activity. There, there was a van fire a couple years ago on Bridge across the street from this property that we're discussing, I'm not, I didn't, I didn't hear as to why it started on fire. I just know that there's a lot of people in our neighborhood that are really trying to make a change. We own a lot of historic houses that are very important to the history of Davenport. My, my house was actually built by one of the original founders, it was built in 1874. We have spent a great deal of time and money trying to restore our home, and we have been very happy with some of the other properties that are turning. There is, there's a property down the street that the people only owned for three years and did a great deal of work to the house, and unfortunately, there are a lot of properties in our neighborhood that are being acquired by people from California, because local people don't see the value in these homes, or don't want to spend the money. I mean, obviously, somebody from California sees these homes and thinks they're a bargain. But my thing is, is, you know, we want to keep the history, we want to keep these houses intact. There's a house around the corner from us, it's a gray house, it's on Mississippi, I apologize, I don't know the address. It was originally split up into more than four apartments, the house was butchered, and now it sits on the market and nobody wants it, because, I mean, it's just, it's going to cost a fortune to fix this home, and it's a beautiful home, and it'd be beautiful if it was fixed up, but, you know, people see the surrounding area, and they don't see a, a reason to spend that kind of money. You know, I mean, once you get to 12th Street, I mean, there's many properties that are not maintained. And so I, I for the historic reason of maintaining the area as much as we possibly can, and obviously, these homes are, you know, expensive to maintain and, and keep, so I, I feel that for that reason alone, it should be considered. Thanks.
Are you? Anybody else? Final call for public? Seeing none? Like to speak again, or speak?
Jim Richardson, represent Ecumenical Housing Development Group, same address as Mr. Moyer gave for our group. Just a couple of answers to a couple of questions that you all posed. We have no intention to sell the property between now and the time of closing to the limited partnership that will own this property. We're in the process of developing that, and the closing, the transfer of our ownership to this limited partnership that's owned primarily by a tax credit investor would take place in April and May of 2023. That's number one. Number two, we do own property within the neighborhood already. We own 1215 to 1219 College, that's a fourplex town, townhome-style property. It's a property that we've invested a significant amount of money into already by placing a roof. It's a property that we've invested a significant amount of money into already by placing a roof over the front of the doors. We improved the erosion issue in the back toward the alley by installing these giant Lego concrete blocks. And the wall is probably 15 to 20 feet tall with a new stairwell that goes down to the alley on that property. So we invest in our properties, we, and then we reinvest in our properties. That college property is also part of this low-income housing tax credit program, will be, and will also be fully renovated. We are adding one unit to the existing zoning with the rezoning to multifamily. We have no intention of maximizing it to the 14 units that would be allowed in that zoning. And as Sam said, in this tax credit program, it has to stay in the program for at least 17 years. So there would be no change to the footprint of the exterior of the building, but there would be no change to the use over that 17-year period. The three units are, will all be handicapped accessible. So that's something that is also needed. We talked about four bedroom. We, the, these units will have two, there'll be two four-bedroom units and one two-bedroom unit. But all three units for families would be handicap accessible, and we would intend to place people that need handicap accessibility. This property is on grade with no basement, and so it makes itself easy for this conversion. And lastly, that I would add is that the entire property would be fully renovated with new roof, new siding, and updated landscaping.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Off-street park.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions before we vote? Commissioner Manis?
Thank you. This is a question here for the applicant. I am wondering why you chose three units rather than two, which would be allowed or a larger number? Why did you pick three?
We were.
So part of the reason is the property's size would accommodate three units very easily, so that's number one. But the zoning doesn't allow for that. And in a tax credit project, you're trying to maximize the number of units that you can within a particular property. And so that's the reason for three versus two.
Will you be adding additional garages or covered parking or anything like that to, to supplement the, the property?
We will be adding off-street parking.
Okay. But not garages or?
Not, not as planned right now. It, they would all be off, off, off-street parking, though.
When was the present building constructed?
1991, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Manis. Any additional questions? Seeing none? Final comments from anybody? Again, seeing none, roll call, please. Commissioner Tomlin.
Eichelberry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes? Bransgard?
No.
Reinhards?
Yes.
Manis?
Yes.
And Stokk?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Chairman, and that concludes the zoning activity report.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. There is no subdivision activity tonight. Any future business you'd like to speak of or?
Yes, we will have a subdivision at our January 3 meeting. It's actually an extraterritorial review. We can go over that a little bit more for you, because that's not something we do very often. But that will be our only item on January 3.
Thank you. Communications, anybody?
Oh, I just wanted to also state for the public that the next step in the process will be a public hearing at the January 4 Committee of the Hole in here. It's a Wednesday at 5:30.
Thank you, Laura. Communications, I've got a couple of things. Commissioner Hepner called about five minutes before the meeting. He was too far away to make it, and he wanted to ask everybody to have a happy holidays, and he looks forward to being here January 3. I also want to thank everybody for your commitment and dedication to our meetings on planning zone. It's been a great year. I look forward to 2023. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of activity to come before us. It's up to you, Laura. Hold you responsible. Other than that, again, I want to thank everybody and have safe and happy holidays and look forward to seeing you all in 2023. Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, signify by aye. Oppose, same sign. Seeing none. We are adjourned. Thanks again for your dedication.